All right, good evening or good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the City Council Regular Session for Thursday, May 4th, 2023. So I'll call ourselves to order. If you would, please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call?
Mr. Miskman?
President?
Mr. Jensen?
Here.
Mr. Harper?
Here.
Mayor Abu Wasli? Mr. Brandt?
Here.
Ms. Menzer?
Here.
Mr. Sterned?
Here.
Okay, if we can have a moment of silence. Thank you so much. Okay, we do have a proclamation this afternoon. This is for the Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, May of 2023. I've asked Gage to read that. And Denise, if you're here, join him as we go through this.
Whereas the contributions of Americans of Asian and Pacific Islander descent are firmly woven into the diverse fabric of our community and nation. And whereas during Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, we celebrate the remarkable accomplishments of Americans of Asian and Pacific Islander heritage that have enriched our great country and helped define our history. And whereas these Americans bolster our economy as entrepreneurs, business owners, and employees who initiate and expand opportunities for their families, communities, and country. And whereas their languages, art, cuisine, and other cultural elements have enriched the American experience. And whereas this month, we honor the more than 20 million Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders who call America home, including those in our own community. We recognize the achievements of Americans of Asian American and Pacific Islander heritage in education, business, science, the arts, government, and the armed forces. We celebrate the story as a unique part of the American story. Now, therefore, I, Gage Miskman, on behalf of Grant Harper, Mayor Pro Tem, of the City of Marion, Iowa, do hereby proclaim the month of May as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. And the City of Marion, Iowa, encourage all residents to observe this month, celebrate the achievements and contributions of Americans of Asian and Pacific Islander descent.
On the behalf of the Civil Rights Commissioner, I would like to thank each and every one in the City of Marion for recognizing every culture, every race, being open to everyone. Because everyone deserves respect and love and openness. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Denise. And Gage, good job, first time. Okay, we're now on to a public forum. This is for comments from the public on topics that are listed on the agenda, but not associated with a public hearing. Is there anybody here to address council this evening? Okay, I should maybe just ask, did we receive any general correspondence from our residents at all?
Not for this section.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda and I'll entertain a motion, please.
Mayor Pro Tem, I move to approve the consent agenda as follows. This will be items A1 through F1, resolutions 31359 through 3172.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda, items A1 through F1, resolutions 31359 through 31372. Any questions or comments on any of those items? Very good. All those in favor of the consent agenda as described, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Okay, the regular agenda?
Mayor Pro Tem, I move to approve resolution number 31373, approving bond purchase agreement for the sale of general obligation corporate purpose and refunding bonds, series 2023B.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number 31373, approving bond purchase agreement for the sale of general obligation corporate purpose and refunding bonds, series 2023B. At this time, I know that, Michael, I believe you're here to give us some background and context on this. So please, we'll turn it over to you for a little bit.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. This will be relatively short and sweet, but wanted to follow through with you. Let's start on slide two, just a brief summary of the current bond environment. I think we are all aware in our everyday lives of the rising interest rates with inflationary concerns. That being said, I think if you look on a historical basis, municipal interest rates still are relatively low. It's not just the existing yield curve rates, but also the credit spread. And the city's outstanding AA1 rating was affirmed by Moody's for both of these GO issuance. We price off the day before benchmark, which was yesterday. Things have been pretty steady this week. And we were able to stay in line, actually a little favorable compared to a couple of national transactions of similar growing metropolitan kind of suburban communities, Lynnwood, Washington, and Carrollton Farmers Branch Schools, Dallas and Seattle suburbs respectively. So good performance overall today, and we're just summarizing those results. You go to slide three, it's the obligatory bond guy yield curve chart. I did show two curves from the last month or so, so that you know it's not a typo. We've got a pretty goofy looking inverted yield curve there. It's just one of those strange things in the environment at this time. What I will say is that overall, interest rates still have stayed relatively attractive. We haven't seen too much move beyond a relatively narrow band on the municipal market over the last year, though we've had some rises and falls in that time. How about today's deal on slide four? So the first, yep, sure thing.
Yeah, sorry to interrupt. There's a little bit of interruption on our connection with you, and I think maybe with Austin.
How about, can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Perhaps it's a lesson for me to slow down. Um, slide four, let's take a look at that and just go through a summary of the information. So the funding for the 2023B bonds was specific to fiscal '23 and '24 CIP projects that have been identified in the city's capital improvement plan. We mentioned the outstanding rating being affirmed of AA1, really the second highest rating you can have and truly maxing out the city's rating. The overall true interest cost here, kind of similar to our APR on our personal or commercial finance, was a 3.82%. This was a 20-year term, and the bonds are callable in eight years. One notable item here is just really good interest from larger institutional investors. That was somewhat unexpected because of the smaller size of the transaction, but I think speaks to the city's overall credit quality. We hope that can continue for future bond issues of the city. Going to go to the next slide, which addresses the 2023C, which would be our next agenda item, but figure we can condense this today. The second series was separated because it's taxable and is refinancing the outstanding series 2021 disaster loan that was related to the derecho. That was a variable rate. We had an opportunity to fix that out as we've seen variable rates increase, plus a pending move this summer from LIBOR to SOFR. Overall, the true interest cost was a 4.64% on this three-year loan. The actual interest rate on this is a 4.395%, which those of you scoring at home will notice is actually lower than the one-year Treasury. Again, that weird yield curve shape is an opportunity here to have some certainty at a low interest rate on a taxable basis for the city's bonds. These will be redeemed with FEMA proceeds once those are received. And again, these will be callable in one year. So between now and that time, we expect to have those FEMA reimbursement funds available. Go to slide six, and then I'll work to wrap up here for you folks. But our processes, we've been working on this over the last month or two.
Michael?
Yep, go ahead.
Just sorry again to interrupt, just we are having a little bit of a connectivity issue. So maybe at the end of, when you complete your comments, maybe some of the other council members will have questions on elements that might have been blocked out in the transmission.
Absolutely, absolutely, thank you for that. So let's go with this, just the timing on this. Everything started being marketed a couple of weeks ago. We had feedback established this week, and we wrapped things up this morning. I won't get into the too many more of the details here, just to show the work for the file. But if we go to the last page, we'll run through the remaining timeline for the bond issue and what this council can expect. So for today's meeting, this will lock in the rates and structure on the financing. We'll authorize the loan documents at the next council meeting on May 18th. Those will be coming from Dorsey and Whitney, your bond attorneys. Then everything will be closed on June 1st, and we'll finalize the resumption of the disaster loan note that's currently held by Wells Fargo at that time. So everything is as planned, and the actual debt payments for the fiscal '23 and '24 projects were almost identical to what we built into our planning model. So overall, a lot of consistency just following through with today's action. As Mayor Pro Tem pointed out, happy to answer any questions or go through any details that maybe didn't come through in transmission so far today.
Okay, so open this up for any questions for Michael that anybody would have. Okay? The slides were helpful in covering you on those transmission problems, Michael, so thank you.
That's what we go for.
All right. So it's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number 31373, approving the bond purchase agreement and sale of general obligation corporate purpose and refunding bonds, series 2023B. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor Pro Tem, I move to approve resolution number 31374, approving bond purchase agreement for the sale of taxable general obligation refunding bonds, series 2023C.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number 31374, approving bond purchase agreement for the sale of taxable general obligation refunding bonds, series 2023C. Now, I think Michael covered off on some of that detail. Are there any questions? Yeah, well?
Just out of curiosity for this, it said the first interest payment was December 1st. Could be anticipated getting FEMA funding prior to that first interest payment.
Or do you know?
Say, at this point, I don't know. We're kind of caught in the FEMA process. The step we're on, we're told take any year from three weeks to three months, so.
There's a chance.
And we have talked to our federal representatives to help us out, but.
Any other questions? Alrighty. Okay, so we have the motion before us. All those in, all those in favor of resolution number 3134, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Opposed.
Okay. We are now entering into a public hearing regarding the proposed adoption of a fiscal year 2023 budget amendment. Presentation on that?
Yes.
Okay, thanks, Leanne.
The state requires a budget amendment to go over any function in order to go over, are due to unanticipated things that come up throughout the year, as well as just timing differences. For instance, we may have intended to purchase something in fiscal year 2022, but the purchase didn't actually occur, or the payment didn't occur until fiscal year 2023. So just to highlight some of the areas in public safety, majority of that is for overtime and payouts related to retirements or people that leave and plan reviews in the fire department. Under Culture and Rec, it's the library for furniture, fixtures, and equipment, and for pool and building repairs in the Parks Department. General Government, legal costs due to litigation, the compensation study, and recruitment. Debt Service is the refinance of 2015A and the disaster loan that we're both being contemplated. The disaster loan is moving forward, the refinance of 2015A is not. And then on the capital projects, it's the timing due to the library and some of the costs paid for derecho cleanup.
Very good, thank you. Is there anybody here from the public that would like to address council at this time on this matter? Have we received any outside correspondence on this?
I have not.
No?
No.
Okay, very good, all right. We'll close the public hearing and move to the resolution.
Mayor Pro Tem, I move to approve resolution 31375, approving fiscal year 2022, 2023 budget amendment.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number 31375, approving fiscal year 2022, 2023 budget amendment. Discussion? Very good, okay. All those in favor of resolution number 31375 as stated, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we enter now another public hearing regarding the proposed adoption of an ordinance amending chapter 355 of the Code of Ordinances regarding electric franchise with interstate power and light company, also known as Alliant Energy in our neighborhood, including the addition of franchise fees. Leanne, I guess this would go back to you?
Yep, as you mentioned, we are looking at increasing the fee from 4% to 5% with the intention to use those funds for the public safety initiatives that were outlined in the fiscal year 24 budget. Just naming a couple of them, hiring six additional firefighters. We've got dollars set aside for recruitment and retention of police officers. We've seen a lot over in that department. And then there's also a new radio E911 agreement for the radio towers that we must pay for.
Very good. I'm glad you brought those highlights up on that. Is there anybody here to address council on this matter before us for this public hearing? Have we received any outside correspondence on this?
I have not.
Okay. Very good. We'll close the public hearing and move on to the next item.
Mayor Pro Tem, I move to approve ordinance number 23-08, amending chapter 355 of the Code of Ordinances regarding electric franchise with interstate power and light company, Alliant Energy, including the addition of franchise fees, initial consideration.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number 23-0, amending chapter 355 of the Code of Ordinances regarding electric franchise with interstate power and light company, Alliant Energy, in the addition, including the addition of franchise fees. And this is our initial consideration. Any discussion? Okay, very good. All those in favor of approving ordinance number 23-08 as stated, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, another public hearing is now open regarding the adoption of proposed, proposed adoption of an ordinance amending chapter 355 of the Code of Ordinances regarding electric franchise with Lynn County REC, Lynn County Rural Electric Cooperative Association, including the addition franchise fees.
I have nothing to add, so the presentation is exactly the same. Again, increasing the fee from 4% to 5%. I'm not going to repeat myself every time, so just exactly the same for this one and the next.
So the target utilization is again the same.
Yes.
Really primarily focused on public safety measures.
Yes.
Okay. Very good. Is there anybody here from the public to address council on this matter? Have we received any correspondence?
I have not.
Okay. We'll close the public hearing and move on to the motion.
Mayor Pro Tem, I move to approve ordinance number 23-09, amending chapter 355 of the Code of Ordinances regarding electric franchise with Lynn County Rural Electric Cooperative Association, Lynn County RE, including the addition of franchise fees. This will be the initial consideration.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number 23-09, amending chapter 355 of the Code of Ordinances regarding electric franchise with Lynn County Rural Electric Cooperative Association, including the addition of franchise fees. This is our initial consideration, discussion.
Your Honor, if I may, City Manager Waller did point out the fact that this would be a good opportunity to once again bring to the public's purview that the staff recommendation will be to waive the third reading and approve this at the next meeting. The reason being, the highest utilization for electric is July, August, September, and the timing it takes to get through the entire process would bump out when we would start receiving the funds. And it also helps us align timing so that of the utilities start charging around the same timeframe.
So this, this affects all of these of this type for the franchise fees, all motions?
Our recommendation is to treat them all the same, so they're all equally. And then to, the staff will be working with the different companies to align the start of each, so that they're aligned.
Okay, so we'll give two readings to each of these ordinances?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thanks for that clarification, that's important. Any other questions that anybody would have? All right. All those in favor of ordinance number 23-09, amending chapter 355 of the Code of Ordinances regarding electric franchise with Lynn County Rural Electric Cooperative Association, including the addition of franchise fees. This is our initial consideration. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Another public hearing regarding the proposed adoption of an ordinance amending chapter 360 of the Code of Ordinances regarding natural gas franchise with the Mid-American Energy Company, including the addition of franchise fees. Leanne, anything additional to add on this particular one?
I think the only thing I can maybe add is that when it comes to gas, the highest utilization is actually January, February, March.
Is there anybody here to address council this evening regarding this measure before us? Have we received any correspondence?
I have not.
Okay. We will close the public hearing and move to the resolution.
Mayor Pro Tem, I move to approve ordinance number 23-10, amending chapter 360 of the Code of Ordinances regarding natural gas franchise with Mid-American Energy Company, including the addition of franchise fees. This is the initial consideration.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number 23-10, amending chapter 360 of the Code of Ordinances regarding natural gas franchise with Mid-American Energy Company, including the addition of franchise fees. This is our initial consideration. Any discussion or questions? And just to highlight, as previously stated, this is our initial consideration. It would be our intent to only have a second consideration in order to sequence these right with the, with the utilities. Hey, any questions? All right, all those in favor of ordinance number 23-10 as stated, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor Pro Tem, I move to approve ordinance number 23-11, amending various sections of the Marion Code of Ordinances, and this is the initial consideration.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number 23-11, in various sections of the Marion Code of Ordinances. This is our initial consideration. Let's see. Would this, Gary, is there anything that we need to, or anybody that we need to highlight here relative to these general amendments?
This is just a small group of changes that came up as part of, at the end of the recodification process. So we're just, we decided to wait until the code was adapted before bringing them forward. On the screen, you can see two sections will be deleted, and they are, it's for employment agreements and residency requirements, which are now included in our personnel policies. Another small section regarding how the airport committee chooses their chair and vice chair. Another section relating to animals at events and splash pads. And then the final one is to add a habitual violator section, of course, no ice removal. And that would be similar to our weed ordinance, tall grass and weeds.
Thank you. Any, any questions? Yeah.
For those who maybe not reading through on the council packets or what's there, can you, what is the animals at events and splash pads? And I only bring this one up because this is kind of a hot issue with folks and our community events and what's happening. So what are we doing with that one?
So what we have added, sorry. What we're doing in this situation is we have installed areas for dogs to get water, but under our current ordinance, the dogs are unable to go to those areas. So we've installed them, but we don't permit people to use them. So we're making an amendment here so that we're able to use those facilities, but still not have to deal with, there are hygiene conditions when you allow animals to use different water features that we also plan. That's why we have the rules with the pool and things like that. As far as the events go, we are changing the rules to ensure that animals are on leashes that are at an appropriate length when they're at events. So that would, would make it so that if you bring your dog to a farmer's market, your dog is on a six-foot leash or less. And part of the reason we're changing that is currently we have some rules where dogs are just blanket not allowed at events, but we have events that are specifically for animals and animal owners, the dog fashion show that we hold in the Artway. And so this will allow them to be present. That will also eliminate situations where somebody is walking their dog out at Lowl Park and happens across the event that they didn't know was occurring, things like that, or some other event that would take place in a park. And so it's to eliminate those types of situations. But we also include language where if you are hosting an event, either the city or a private party can make a statement that animals are not allowed at the events. Because we do have some situations that are not appropriate for animals to attend, such as fireworks and fireflies. Those are events where we would prefer people not bring their pets along.
Thank you very much. And actually, the little, the dog, especially the one at Lowl with the little dog drinking fountain, I've actually been out there where the dogs are like lined up, like little kids sitting there waiting. I said, even in Marion, our dogs are polite, so appreciate the community looking at that as we come family, family and pets. They are. I'd talk to Bill for that dog for that, don't you?
You obviously don't know my critter.
Train him.
Any other questions? Alrighty then. All those in favor of ordinance number 23-11, amending various sections of the Marion Code of Ordinances, our initial consideration, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor Pro Tem, I move to approve ordinance number 23-07, approving a request to rezone property from. approving a request to rezone property from B C, Community Business, to B R, Regional Business, for property located at thirty-two oh one and thirty-three oh one, Armar Drive, Marion, Iowa. And this is by Armar Plaza Associates and Armstrong Race Realty Company, and this is the second consideration.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number twenty-three dash zero seven, approving a request to rezone property from B C, Community Business, to B R, Regional Business, for property located at thirty-two oh one and thirty-three oh one, Armar Drive, Marion, Iowa. And this is our second consideration. Any questions? I think it is important just to, for the record, to state that this is for, I believe it is this St. Luke's Emergency Room, to be located in, in our, our city, which I think is a great addition in terms of overall medical response. So I think it's a worthy undertaking. Anything else? Okay, all those in favor of ordinance number twenty-three dash zero seven, as stated, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Your honor, I move to suspend the rules and proceed to the final consideration of ordinance number twenty-three dash zero seven.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to suspend the rules and proceed to final consideration of ordinance number twenty-three dash zero seven. I'll ask the first question just for, for clarity. The driving force for suspending the rules is what again?
The applicant is seeking to, they got a few more actions they have to take, and they can't get building permits going. And the next step is the design review. So they can't begin that step until the zoning is complete. So this essentially saves, saves them about two weeks, and they can get the next step submitted and allow us to start that process as well, so.
Okay, so it's essentially project acceleration.
Yeah, correct.
So, so they can begin to get underway and ultimately meet the critical needs, which is part of all of this.
Building, building season.
Yeah. Building season.
Yeah.
Okay. So it's been moved and seconded to suspend the rules and proceed to final consideration of ordinance number twenty-three dash zero seven. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor Protem, I move to approve ordinance number twenty-three zero seven, approving a request to rezone property from B C, Community Business, to B R, Regional Business, for property located at thirty-two zero one and thirty-three zero one, Armor Drive, Marion, Iowa. Armor Plaza Associates and Armstrong Race Realty Company, this will be final consideration.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number twenty-three dash zero seven, approving a request to rezone property from B C, Community Business, to B R, Regional Business, for property located at thirty-two oh one and thirty-three oh one, Armar Drive in Marion, Iowa. This is our final consideration. Any questions? Or comments? Yes? Randy?
Sorry.
No? Nope. Okay. All those in favor of ordinance number twenty-three dash zero seven, as stated, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so we are at our point in the agenda for a public forum. If there's anybody here that would like to address counsel, please understand that the counsel won't take any action on the comments at this time, however may, we may do so at a future meeting. So is there anybody here to address counsel? Please come to the podium, and you've already got the attendance card. Very good. As you start, please state your name and address, if you would, please.
Turn the mic around towards, sorry.
I'm pretty well though, are you sure?
That's fine.
Okay.
There you go.
My name is Shannon Schrader, spelled like Schroder, when you look at it on paper. I live at five ninety-two Barrington Parkway in Marion, so backs up to Tower Terrace. And I'm here today to just talk to you about the proposed Dollar Tree that's supposed to go in my backyard. And normally in these situations, I would be uber-prepared and have a packet for you and have submitted every at a time, but I just sort of found out today that this was an option to come speak to you guys. So we were alerted last week about the proposed Dollar Tree. I did attend the session at Lynnmar High School with the design firm, with Hall and Hall, and asked a bunch of questions, but, you know, they didn't know a lot. They could only give us specs on the building and everything. I also met with Mr. Hackett with Planning and Zoning to ask some questions today as a starting point. Because I was alerted that I could be at this meeting today. Normally, we would have, you know, a lot of neighbors here. So this will not be the first time you will see me. You'll see me again in two weeks, and two weeks after that, since it has been tabled for June thirteenth. So in our neighborhood, we did know that the area behind us was zone commercial. Although I've been there since two thousand fourteen, a large chunk of my neighbors have been there quite a long time. And when we moved in, we were told it was going to be like businesses, right? So look like Esco, and now Barrel House and Parks and Schmidt. And we were all sort of told that it would be something that would be good for the community, like local businesses or medical or something like that. So we all have young children that attend the Lynnmar schools around us. So going to and from Lynnmar, my son is at Excelsior, so I drive a gaggle of seventh grade boys most days to school, so a lot of traffic there. But as you guys all know, Lynnmar, the way it's structured, a lot of kids walk to and from school every day. So we're concerned about the safety that Dollar Tree would be, you know, the safety with traffic, obviously. In addition, we've been doing some research into like the Dollar Tree or Dollar General-type stores. And a lot of communities have been doing moratoriums or dispersal restrictions for businesses like that. So we will be submitting some information to you guys prior to the next meeting. But in addition to the traffic and safety, health of the children, you know, it would be nice with Lynnmar High School and Excelsior to put maybe some type of strip mall there and have a smoothie place and a healthy lunch place instead of a giant candy store. Things like that. The, some other issues that we're concerned about, property values. We did some research, and businesses like that can decrease property values by sixteen to twenty-one percent. So that's obviously a concern as well. Drainage, that property, if you walk down that side of Tower Terrace, so it would be like the south side of Tower Terrace on that sidewalk, it is just sludge all the time from all the drainage there. So if you live in that neighborhood, you know to walk on the opposite side of Tower Terrace. So we're all a little concerned about the drainage, even though we've seen the plans. Most houses in our area have had one to two insurance claims since the derecho hail storm. So people are concerned about flooding basements and getting dropped from insurance. So those are some of the issues that we're concerned about, as well as the overall aesthetic of the neighborhood. So I was looking through the comprehensive plan, and it doesn't seem like this type of business would fit in with, you know, the overall plan that you guys have laid out for the city. When you have buildings like Esco and Barrel House and Parks and Schmidt and Trading Grounds, and then there's a daycare right there, they all have the same general feel and aesthetic. So just wanted to let you guys know that you would be receiving some things from us. We do have a petition, I'm sure you're aware of it. I just checked as the law kept, we have two hundred and eighty-eight signatures on it so far. A lot of the area neighborhoods are starting to send it out through their HOAs. So there's definite concern. The other thing I didn't really address was the amount of crime that sometimes these things bring in. We already have a Dollar Tree, you know, on the main drag in Marion, so. Any, I'm just rambling. Like I said, I'm not a hundred percent prepared for this, but just wanted to address you guys today, and we'll be sending something over. I'm not sure what the process is to file for like a request for a moratorium, but I'll be looking into that further, and I don't know. So more to follow on that. So thank you for letting me speak to you today.
Yeah. Thank you, Shannon, for coming forward, and I would just say, I think you were probably more prepared than you're giving yourself credit for. I mean, you cited several things that you've already reviewed, so that was preparation on the fly, I guess. But I, I should just comment, we're, all of the council is aware of this. And I'll look, Dave, correct me if I say anything wrong here, but, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Okay. The actual point of authority on this is the Planning and Zoning Commission, which I think this matter was tabled from their very next meeting, next Tuesday, and is now scheduled for the June thirteenth meeting. And so that's, that's kind of the first stop on this process, depending on the action of planning and zoning, because as they look at it from comprehensive plan and zoning regulations that we have, depending on their decision, if it was turned down and the applicant wanted to appeal, it would come back to city council. So the Planning and Zoning Commission really is the point of authority on this. Did, did I get that right?
You did. You did. Yep.
Okay. So I think then the next opportunity to address this in a formal way will be June thirteenth. Is that the proper date for P and Z?
Yes, correct. It's June thirteenth. The question I think she's asking is a moratorium is what, on that, on that specific use.
Right.
That's a, that's a council action in that respect.
And that's, that's, there's nothing on the agenda for council to take action. The, but I do want to go back to one of the things that's important. So just communication out to the neighborhood is, is important to us and letting them know when the meeting is and the action that the applicant has requested. So you know that the communication has been sent out. We plan on putting something in the in-focus. And I think Dave's putting something on the memo or the agenda if he hasn't done so already. So we're trying to make sure that the neighborhood is fully aware that, that the applicant has requested that it be tabled to the June meeting so that they can attend in that appropriate venue, as you, as you mentioned.
So regarding the moratorium, but that would be something that you would rule on, correct? Or no?
Yeah. You're right.
That's something that would have to be on the agenda. They can only discuss what's on the agenda.
Right. Okay, so once someone files for that, how long before you would get on the agenda?
The, the, the moratorium is a, is a council action that's, that would be, there would have to be a direction for city council to effectuate that, that sort of action. And at that point, I mean, we'd have to have a, a discussion with the council in order to have them consider that, that request, and then give us the formal direction.
Okay. Great. Well, thank you. I appreciate it.
All right. Thank you so much. Is there anybody else here to address counsel this evening? Okay, were, were there any general comments submitted for this section independently?
I do not have anything.
Okay. Okay, we'll close the public forum and go to council comments, and we'll start with Sarah.
No surprise what I'm going to bring up for anyone who is there and was involved, since this was a big part of my last couple of weeks. Great job to Team Marion on the city showcase. Jessica, Amber, I know we're a point on that and putting that together with our Y team, but we estimate with attendees and with the volunteers that were there and all the booths, we were near a thousand people that day. The prizes and the things we all give away from the Y side are all donations that we accumulate throughout the year through various organizations, and we just heard wonderful things from all the city booths and the information and the fun, and people were just blown away by the great free morning that they could spend with all of us. So I want to thank everybody for putting that together and hope we get to do that again next year. It, it's a lot of work for what doesn't look like it's a lot of work, but it's just so much fun to see so many community members and families and people together. So that's my first big one, and I'll let you talk about office hours changing this Saturday and where they're going to find us. Grant?
Will?
I'm going to give a plug real quick to Creekside Pride Committee that I'm on. We had a meeting on Monday and saw some plans for Site One, which would be up by Tower Terrace. So excited about that. But we also, at that meeting, decided that we were going to have a creek cleanup on June tenth this summer. Timing and everything's not finalized yet, but put that on your calendar if you want to come help. I think we'll probably be in the Hannah Park area, so it's not, we're not going to walk the whole creek. It's just going to be a small section to do a few hours of cleanup and, and I expect everyone on council to be there. No, we'll see. But there'll be more information to come when that will be.
Thanks, Will. Steve?
Yeah, on behalf of the city, I attended a couple of events this year, or this week, excuse me. The first one was the State of the City for Cedar Rapids. And the other one was yesterday, which was Medco's annual luncheon. Both events were packed house, which I think is representative of the level of interest on what is going on around in the area. Also attended two ribbon cuttings. The first one was a little over a week ago up at Planet Smoothie, terrific place. And the second one was yesterday after the Medco meeting, and that was for the twenty forty building, which is a new building out on the south side of the Marion Enterprise Center. And again, if you drive by one fifty-one out towards the police department and look south, it's that new, new building on the far side. They did a very nice job, in my opinion, of that building. So it's already half, half full, maybe the other half. And so I think the whole thing, what is starting to happen in Cedar Rapids, or excuse me, in Marion, and back when I was the head of Medco, I tried to get spec buildings going. There was not interest a lot of years ago, but today there is interest. So that originally went up as a kind of a spec building with them using part of it. There's a new spec building just on the east side of the Marion Enterprise Center near the airport. So we are seeing a level of interest by developers and builders in Marion, so that's it.
Gage?
Yeah, so, yeah, I want to take the opportunity to shout out the Mental Health Wellness Fair that was put on by the students with Venture. And it was just really impressive to see all the students come together to put on, you know, quite an amazing event at the library between different organizations from Lynnmar and Marion and other non-prof agencies that deal with, within mental health. And of course, it's very timely because May is Mental Health Month. And just as someone also young, not as young as the high schoolers in our community, but young who has, you know, dealt, and I'm open about dealing with anxiety and depression, and it being May, Mental Health Month, I just encourage any residents that are considering, you know, taking steps in, in their mental health to do so, whether it's go to therapy. I did that weekly for over a year, and it's really helpful because, you know, mental health is physical health. Your brain's a big part of your body, makes up who you are. So just really impressed with what the students did and being able to bring a bunch of people into a very public facility and have those, those open and honest conversations about that. So good, good for them to put that together, and yeah, respect for sure.
Thanks, Gage, for that. Thank you, Sarah, for the reminder. Sarah and I will be at the farmer's market at Toby Park, bright and early, at eight AM for the first farmer's market for the season. And so just to remind everybody, that is a great event. A lot of the vendors, whether it is fresh food, vegetables, that you're looking A lot of the vendors, whether it is fresh food, vegetables that you're looking for, or crafts, and of course, the stimulating conversation that you can have with your council members. So that, that is now underway, and we're looking forward to that series of events throughout the summer. I failed to mention this at a prior time, but many of you know that Craig Adamson is our, the city's representative on the Lynn County, Cedar Rapids, Lynn County Solid Waste Agency. And just by virtue of some scheduling conflicts he had, I subbed in for, at a, at a meeting on April eighteenth, a subcommittee meeting that the Solid Waste Agency has relative to starting the planning process for how they're going to handle, design and handle a transfer station as part of their long-range planning for when ultimately the landfill will be closing. You know, the first thing I learned in that session was, is that the transfer stations, you know, first and foremost, will most likely be situated at one of several potential sites in southwest Cedar Rapids. Rail access, highway access, there are a lot of criteria by which site selection for a transfer station is made, and so they are evaluating that. But the big takeaway that I had from attending that meeting is that I really applaud them for looking now at how they're going to address the future closure of the landfill and the means by which that comes together. And so it's a proactive step, and I think that in the long range, that's going to ultimately bode well for the city of Marion, since we've been essentially the host site for the landfill from its inception. And so I did want to report that. With that, I don't have anything else to offer. So thank you for your, oop. Oh, yes, we do. We move to a closed session. Gage, I think you've got that.
Mayor Protem, I move to adjourn to an exempt session regarding collective bargaining as permitted under section twenty-point seventeen-three of the Code of Iowa.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to adjourn to an exempt session regarding collective bargaining as permitted under section twenty-point one-seven-three of the Code of Iowa. May I please have the legal statement?
Thank you, Your Honor. I've reviewed the proposal for an exempt session and find the same to be appropriate under Iowa Code, section twenty-point seventeen-three.
Very good. Roll call vote?
Mr. Misscman?
Yes.
Mr. Jensen?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Grant?
Yes.
Ms. Menser?
Yes.
Mr. Sterned?
Very good. We are adjourned to exempt session. Thank you so much for attending.